Roll call please.
Commissioner Mendoza, present. Vice Chairperson Harvey, present. Chairperson Hammeras. Let the record reflect Commissioner Rivera and Commissioner Abadi are not present.
Hopefully soon. Hopefully soon. Please stand and pledge allegiance. Mr. Harvey, would you lead us today?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, Mr.
Excellent. All right, so I've got to read this for the sake of reading it. Public appearances, B one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please rise, please raise your hand and acknowledge and be acknowledged by the chairperson, and at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that no longer present, that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anybody here tonight who has wishes to address the commission that is not on the agenda? I will take that as a no. All right, let the record reflect six thirty-four that Commissioner Rivera has graced us with his presence. Thank you, sir. B two, matters on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any items appearing on the agenda within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. I'm going to guess that you're here tonight for items that are on the agenda. That be correct? Excellent, excellent. Consent calendar. All items appearing under consent cal- agenda will be acted upon by the planning commission, one motion, discussion. Should any commissioner or other person request an item be considered separately, at that time it will be taken up and at that time determined by the chairperson, that would be me. So we have on the consent agenda, I believe tonight is just the minutes for October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, and November ninth, twenty twenty-two. Has everybody reviewed the minutes as necessary?
Chairman, I wasn't here on November twenty-ninth, so it's my intent to abstain from that one, but as this is one item, should I abstain from both? Or do you want to separate them, or?
Well, November ninth, not the twenty-ninth.
The, I'm sorry, the ninth, November ninth.
We can do them separately.
Yeah, because I, I, I can't vote on that when I wasn't here, so.
We can do that. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes for October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two?
I'll make, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion.
It's been moved to their second.
I second it.
It's been moved to second, and call for the vote.
Chairperson Hammeras, uh, just real quick, um, you mentioned the twenty-second, on here we have the twenty-sixth.
Well, you know, it's, one mistake was made, now two mistakes.
I called the twenty-ninth, so I just want to clarify that further.
I, I, no, no, my bad, October twenty-sixth. So let that reflect in the, uh, in the, in the motion, so call for the vote.
All right, motion passes with three yeses. We have one abstained, and that would be Chairperson Ham, or I'm sorry, Chair. I can't even speak tonight.
Okay, it wasn't me. I don't think.
Correction, we have one bit abstained, and that would be Commissioner Mendoza.
For the twenty-sixth.
No, I did yes on this one, for the twenty-sixth.
Oh, I'm s- it's showing abstained on yours.
Okay, can you clear it?
I clicked yes.
Clear it and let us just re-vote.
Yeah, we can do that.
Let's try one more time. We could just raise our hands or do a silent ballot.
That would be a no. Let's go ahead.
I mean, it's still a pass if we can't do that, so.
Go ahead and re-vote.
All right, let's try one more time.
And I'm still showing Ms. Mendoza as an abstain.
I'm still hitting yes.
Okay.
All right, well.
For the record, um, Ms. Mendoza, can you please state your vote on this item?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, I'll let it reflect. This agenda item for October twenty-sixth has passed four zero with Mendoza as a yes.
All right, so let's try. I need a motion to approve the minutes for November ninth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Motion of, um, approve the, uh, agenda for December.
November.
Uh, November, here we go.
Everyone gets a turn. All right, concentrate, take a breath. November ninth.
November ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Um, we just realized that Commissioner Harvey and I were both gone, so we both have to abstain if we don't have a warrant for that.
We can move it to the next meeting, or we can push it.
Or wait till.
We can push it back, and if, if Commissioner, uh, Abadi shows up, we can take it up later in the, at the end of the meeting.
Right, so for the record, um, the November ninth minutes will be tabled for now, for, for now.
For, for the moment, yeah.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and cancel that.
And help me remember to come back to that later if we, if I forget.
Will do.
Do we need to have the tech guys check that?
Put on each others.
Because I was wondering about that, that maybe they, they were just reversed.
Yeah, because my screen was showing yes, but it was showing up.
It's all guys in the back's fault.
Chairperson Hammeras, uh.
Yes, ma'am.
If you would like to proceed.
Oh, here we go. Let it reflect that Commissioner Abadi has, uh, entered the building.
Six forty.
I'd like to move to approve the, uh, the minutes for, uh, November ninth, twenty twenty-two.
We can try that again. We already did October twenty-sixth.
Yes, okay.
We're doing the twenty-ninth now. And I need you to second it if you don't have any objections.
No.
So will you second it?
Oh, I had a question, uh, what was the result of the O Street abandonment? Remember, they thought that maybe the city owned it? What, what was the result?
Would that be part of, part of proving the minutes, or do we want to push that nut? That would not be appropriate question.
Well, I'm just curious, because.
No, no, I understand, I, I think that's the appropriate question.
When is it, when can I bring it up?
My, my, my understanding is that, that it's right-of-way and not owned in fee by the city. So it'll be per.
Two applicants on the same site, you, uh, familiar with Mr. Velasco and Romero?
By name, yes. I may not vet them, but I, for businesses.
You guys are on the same, on the same lot? Sharing this portion of the same building? Uh, who's, uh, who's the owner of the property?
Property is Javier Sanchez.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because when, when we had Mr. Velasco and Mr. Romero, they were kind of going back and forth as to who was the actual owner?
Well, the, the owner, um, by title and, and recorded is Javier Sanchez, my father-in-law.
Okay, all right, uh, again, um, have patience with me. I'm a simple man, and, and it's, it's been, we talked to you some time ago, then we talked to, to these two gentlemen, and they were kind of not sure. A- matter of fact, we asked them who was, who was in that, that building over there in the southwest corner? And, and they weren't too sure as to what was going on with that building.
It was my father-in-law, I, I don't have that information, and I, I wish I did.
Is there somebody actively living in there?
I believe so.
And, and the reason I ask is because now we have three different applications, although your, two of them would be per se, two of them would be under your name, and then I have these other two gentlemen. Uh, in the event that something goes sideways, there's gonna be a lot of point, fingers getting pointed back and forth, and if there's no resolution there, then the fingers get pointed back at the, at the commission here, so. I just, I wanna.
If I could, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the questions that was brought up that night that I don't think we ever got resolution on is if there's a fence separating that house from the property, because we had concern about whoever's living in that property coming over towards your property. Is there a fence separating it?
Well, there is interior access, but there's a side fence to the south side of the property. So they, they can walk out and, and enter, then it's all within the fenced area, all within the same parcel. Uh, but there is a, I believe there's a western and a southern fenced area for that, that building there.
Sorry, Commissioner Rivera, you brought up that and triggered that in.
Okay, so we, we asked, and we've covered some of the questions from the, from the previous applicant. Is, um, so we're gonna do, uh, we're, the intent is, uh, some, some retail now. On the north in, the north half of the building.
Correct, about the north third of the building, about two thousand, twenty-four hundred square foot roughly.
And, and when I did see this here, uh, last week, um, I, I did start to go, wait, wait a minute, we haven't, I'm, I'm familiar with Mr. Sawyer, we, we talked to him here about a year ago. Where is all the progress? And then I did notice in here, yes, you have guys did hit a wall per se, because it's, uh, Second Street. So I, I had, I had to back off there. How's that street?
Beautiful.
Eyes a street in the city.
E- especially with, hopefully, especially hopefully with lots of trailers coming in, coming into the lot, so.
We, we don't have that access, or, and we, we haven't had that use yet, but, um, the city did a great job and a great service to the citizens by putting sidewalks in that area and saving quite a bit of money, and I appreciate that as well, but.
That, that's why I bring it up, I, I hope that that's, that's moving forward, that helps out a lot. Customer would be like, hey, we need to drop off here, it's, it's a nice road.
It's a, it's a very nice road.
Um, so security cameras, you, you guys said that you, you were waiting to, to finish off, uh, some of those surfaces there. The reason I bring that up is, um, uh, we're gonna store RVs, uh, sometimes some toy haulers, I assume as well.
Correct.
And just by mere chance, uh, in those toy haulers will have some of the same stuff that you will be retailing.
Somewhere, yes.
Um, I always say never make an honest man dishonest, right? Especially, I mean, uh, the RV storage twenty-four hours, seven days a week, correct?
Correct.
There was something here, uh, no fabrication or welding will take place on site.
Correct.
Do we need to distinguish there specifically? No fabrication or welding for this applicant? Because we know there's gonna be some welding and fabrication on the other half of the building. That being an auto body. Am I incorrect in even bringing that up?
Honestly, don't want to speak to another person's business that I'm not familiar with, but for our business, we, we don't have a welder on site. We will not have a welder on site, we don't fabricate our parts. We, we retail, we're involved in retail sales and, and the installation of those parts, which are bolt-on in nature.
Well, the, the other, uh, conditional use permit for the other, uh, person would include that, so that, so to say there can't be any on-site is kind of an ambiguous term, because we have one site with multiple businesses on it. So then the kind of question is, is how do you decide how far is too far on that?
Associated with this.
I think we're, I think we're going down a, a road maybe that we should not, should stay away from.
I think we're going into the weeds.
Yeah, I think we need to just let the, if there's a problem down the road, then when it's, we'll deal with that problem when it comes.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I wasn't, I would just do it out there to.
No, no, but it, you, you are right, it does definitely, uh, kind of a conflict between the two CUPs, but, uh, each one has its own specific spot in the building. And if the, as long as the one thing stays in their part of the building, and I'm understanding the wall between the two is not just a wall, it's a firewall.
Correct, with no, no door, no access from one side to the other.
So hopefully that will, uh, solve that problem or answer that question. But keep going, you're doing good.
No, that's, that's, I, you know what, just the fact that there was the outline that, you know, they had been waiting for Second Street, and the gentleman answered my question as to, um, we know, we have a name, I'm sure it's on record, but finally, you know, one of the applicants was able to say, okay, this is who owns that, this is what's going on at that corner house. Um, I, that was kind of left in the dark with the other two applicants, and obviously you, you know, you're familiar with the other two applicants. Uh, I just need to put all those pieces together. Uh, again, seeing this last week, in, in another application for this site, um, again, I, I was a bit apprehensive, but now talking to, to yourself, uh, and making all those connections, I, I'm fine.
Having multiple CUPs on one piece of property is kind of a unique situation for us, I don't think we've seen that. I don't recall ever seeing it, so.
I mean, just in regards to the cameras, I, I do want to point out, there are cameras on site now, but there will be additional cameras in the future, once the facility's improved, to the extent of the CUP.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure, I just, it was another thing when I saw, okay, retail, their retail business is very related to what they're gonna be storing there, um, just an FYI consideration. Uh, but you seem to already have all the, uh, all the dots connected here. Uh, again, I just needed some reassurance.
Commissioner Abadi, have any, uh,
I think it's just a, a, a natural, uh, growth that Abadi already has. So, so they can sell the accessories and put them on.
Not to mention, if he's selling accessories, that's tax dollars, and tax dollars are good for the city, so.
It's also brand itself tax.
That's hard to buy, that's hard to fight. Um, so I'm just gonna ask some real simple questions here, um. How long do you think it'll be, or what's your timeframe for getting the lot squared away and getting your basins? You can actually start putting RVs on the lot?
Well, I, I can answer the first part of that, uh, because there's several, several aspects to it. My understanding of the process, after speaking with city staff, is we need to supply the grading plan. We've already supplied a, a site plan in the original CUP, and had discussions, um, it's been reviewed by, by city staff. Now we need to supply the grading plan. That'll be the next step, and we should be able to move forward with that within the next sixty days. Once that's completed, I don't know what the, the timeframe is, it'll depend on workload at the engineering office that's gonna conduct that. Then it has to go to the city staff for review, and then whatever the timeframe is for any alterations to that plan. And, uh, it's just kind of a back and forth at, at that point. I, I don't want to commit myself to a timeline, other than I can tell you, we're ready to proceed within the next sixty days to have the plan drawn up and submitted to city staff.
I mean, we have city staff here that might be able to shed some light on the speed of that process.
Yeah, this is, um, pretty straightforward, um, I don't anticipate anything over sixty days for review and all that. They, they, that's just, if there's, uh, um, comments on, on the plans, no more than sixty.
Or we're lucky, might actually be able to store an RV by July.
Be kinda hot. You know, they're not gonna be going to the dunes.
Well, no, that's when you do your best storage work, though, is in the summertime.
That's when you do your best storage.
Oh. All right, yeah, that was.
I wish you well, so you can get your business running. Yes.
Yeah, I have no other questions, anybody else have anything else? Staff, anything else? Okay, I'm gonna close public hearing at this time, uh, six fifty-eight. I think it's pretty straightforward, uh, CUP. Was anything, uh, on the, uh, in here from the fire department for this particular one, uh, that I could see?
Fire department doesn't have anything.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So with that, let's, uh, uh, call for a motion.
I'll move to approve amendment to CUP twenty dash zero five for Robert Sawyer, um, for owner of Dunes to Desert located at four oh eight East Second Street to allow the use of off-road accessories, retail sales, and installation services.
There's a second.
Take Commissioner Abadi.
All right, it's been moved to second, and call for the vote. There it is.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Sir, you are on your way to the next step of, uh, I hope you have lots of Mylanta and aspirin. D two, subject, public hearing, discussing action conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero two for Dennis Chavez to allow the use of a trucking storage facility located at four twenty-sixth East Fourth Street, uh, APN zero six four dash one nine four dash zero six six. Going to open. Come on. Come on. All right, I'll go back to that. An open public hearing at this time at seven o'clock. Staff report.
Aided, um, conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero two is for applicant Denise Chavez, owner of JD Freight Forward. And this CUP is to allow for the operation of tr- uh, truck storage facility located at four twenty-sixth East Fourth Street. Um, Ms. Chavez is proposing to store two to four trucks at the project site for a limited time. The project was duly noticed in the Holtville Tribune and Colexico Chronicle on December first, twenty twenty-two, and property owners within three hundred feet of the project site were noticed as well. The project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environment, Environmental Quality Act under section one five three two two for infill development projects. Staff and Ms. Chavez are in attendance for any questions?
Chavez. Ms. Chavez, excuse me, join us at the podium. Oh, that's Denise, not Dennis, my apologies. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Let's start on the right.
I certainly do, thank you. Um, the, one of the, I have like three items that I wanted to discuss. The first one is, um, this property is on Fourth, and I, it, looking at the surrounding streets, it looks like these trucks are gonna be exiting and going to the highway. But at Fourth Street, there is no intersection, is, has that been taken into account? That if there's increased truck traffic trying to cross right there at Fourth Street and trying to get across? Because there's no turn lanes, no the trucks coming in and going out right there?
By the Fourth Street?
The Fourth and Highway eighty-six.
Eighty-six and Fourth?
Because I don't see any other way for them to get out, other, they, they either have to go north and go through a residential area, or they go west and have to cross over to Highway eighty-six.
West. A west.
And so they, they'll be going up over Highway eighty-six with the trucks and everything? I'm a little concerned about that.
I guess if they're all making right turns, I guess we're okay.
Um, the next one has to do with, um, because there was no noise study done, I guess you contacted the res- the three residences along the path right there. In looking at the signatures, the, the, what they signed didn't exactly say what it was that they were signing other than a saying, you know, yes, we're okay with it. Didn't really say what this project involved, that if there's a potential of noise creation, increased truck traffic. How is it that they were notified what it was they were signing off on?
I went to, uh, I went to her, I'm sorry, I, I I went, um, with each, uh, person, and I explained to them also. And they said it's okay, and they give me some phone numbers.
Generally, when we have somebody sign, it says on there what it is that they're signing.
And then, yes, reminder to the commissioner, we, um, we sent notices within three hundred feet of the property as well. Um, and we, um, on the notice states the, uh, the, uh, type of use, the, will be placed in that vicinity.
Or can, we've confirmed that these three people are the property owners and not renters?
The only member that was spoke to him.
There's always been that question about the disconnect, if we're notifying the property owners within three hundred feet, it's not necessarily that the people living there get notified, because if they're tenants, they may not know. And then if they're the ones signing, that they don't care, I mean, they don't mind, is it the same person? Is it the property owner that's signing saying they don't mind? That's why I was, I, I was, just wanted to bring that question up. And then the, the third concern that I have is, I, I understand this is just a truck. And then the the third concern that I have is, I I understand this is just a truck storage facility. Um when the trucks are being dropped off or picked up. A big concern I have is uh to to not not in a bad way, but truck drivers have a tendency to start at the truck and let it running, either we leaving it on. Uh to warm it up, or I don't know what, I don't not a trucker, so I don't know the purposes, but I do know that quite often you see truckers. Leaving their the trucks running. Can, is there something that we can do to curtail that and make sure that, you know, a driver, when he goes in the morning at. What is the starting hours, like seven in the morning, something like that, that they don't just start up the truck and leave it running, when you have residences right across the street? That are gonna have to listen to these trucks running.
That's why we.
Your condition, you can.
I hear you.
Um in your conditions of approval, uh we have a a wall, it's a noise attenuation one.
Actually gets a bit of enough noise of somebody leaving a truck running fifteen.
Based on on the um technical studies that we've seen, um i- it does reduce. Um the the noise significantly. Uh especially if it's uh made of block.
And. At six hundred feet away is the county yard with. Numerous trucks that I'm sure are starting much earlier than seven o'clock in the morning. And idling, and I would imagine that. They've. Either become very used to that, or. I I'm just saying, they're not, this isn't gonna be the only trucks in the area, because the county yard is just down from there, and it's, they've got a lot of trucks there. That uh come and go on a regular basis.
Um excuse me, Mr. Mendoza, I did bring the property owner. Both of them, the other two names are.
Anyway, sorry, I didn't mean.
No, those were my concerns.
I have a question for applicant. You're wanting to store trucks, is this like uh where people want? Owners of the trucks or drivers of the trucks, they don't have a place to put? Their vehicle, so that's the purpose of your business?
Yes, which is, it's a parking.
So this, yeah, so it's like you're renting space, like a parking space?
Oh, there are my trucks.
They're your trucks? Okay, so so what business do you do with your trucks?
Uh it's a trucking company.
I'm sorry?
Trucking company, it's a semi truck.
Okay, and you're hauling goods?
We're hauling um building materials.
Build building materials, so you need, you essentially need a place to park your vehicles? Okay, alright, so they will be leaving in the morning and coming back in the evening after they've done their daily route. Okay, I understand.
Um so as you just um expressed, these will be only your trucks that will be utilizing the space, it won't be. Other company trucks at any time. And um in the staff report here, it says. Parking two to four trucks or trailers for a limited time, is this a temporary type? Project, or how should I interpret limited time?
You've got seven in the morning to go do work and they come back at nine o'clock, so it's just overnight, is that how you mean by limited? Versus being a storage twenty four hours? I have a question to staff, okay? In the conditions, you're asking the applicant to put in um a mason wall. But we didn't ask that of the prior applicant last year. Just a decorative wall. What's the like the criteria to determine? And is the mason wall to be all for four sides?
Just the, just the front. Directly, yeah, the ones. That is correct.
Okay, so the the other three sides could be the fence.
It all depends the location of it, with is within the industrial zone, if it's a heavy industrial and surrounding, it's all industrial, then. Um that would be, you know, exempt from it.
Mason wall is only on the wall facing the road where the residential homes are.
That is correct.
Okay, and the purpose of it is to diminish the noise?
That is correct.
Uh also here, I see that um. The staff recommended to conduct a noise study. But um. The applicant opted to forego the expense of the noise study. So in lieu of, you've got the three signatures of the of the neighbors there. I guess my my comment to that is, are those only three people that are gonna be impacted by the noise?
Because we're going to the west on Fourth Street, and there is only three houses. By that street.
Is it the the staff, that's, we only sent notices to those three residents, or we sent in any any others?
Are we doing, within three hundred feet?
Eleven people. And we got the three signatures from the closest to it, and we haven't heard back from any of the rest?
Didn't receive any com.
Comments, and none of them are here. And directly across, directly across from it's actually a park. So there's nobody directly across from that property.
And then just my final um comment is regarding um the fire hydrant and. Um the re- the requirement of the installation. But then applicant states that there's one two hundred and forty feet from the project site, uh county fire maintains. That the measurement is on an approved route that would you, that they would use it not a straight line, could I get elaboration on that?
Um commission chairman, um according to the fire code, approved route is the route that a fire apparatus would take. Um going across property lines um or fencing, anything that a fire apparatus couldn't cross um. That wouldn't use in a in a emergency route, wouldn't be something that we would take into account um for. Being able to secure a water source for fire um incidents. So um that's when we, when we look at that, it it's um. It's, there's two hydrants, um the two closest hydrants, one would be on L Street. We would have to travel north down L Street onto Fourth Street. Um that's five hundred and sixty two feet of roadway, give or take as an estimate. And the other one would be on Fourth Street and. South K Street, and that's seven, estimated seven hundred and fifty feet of length before reaching the property. Um the three hundred foot is is kind of the set standard um of hydrant spacing. Um it's within the fire code and then within the city. Um kind of been a a constant every three hundred feet, so there's not one within that three hundred foot. Therefore, we would make that recommendation for a fire uh hydrant to be installed.
There aren't any fire hydrants in that entire area that are three hundred feet apart. Anywhere, I drove around extensively the last two days looking for fire hydrants, and the whole area is completely underserved by hydrants.
Correct, and that's that the two closest ones are L, L Street and. Uh L Street and Fourth Street, or would be south of uh Fourth Street. And the other one is on Fourth Street down um kind of a. On the, it would be west of the county uh road yard. Um on Fourth. Those would be the closest.
I believe the apparatus carry enough. Four inch to be able to make at least a five hundred foot lay.
It would be close.
It shouldn't be.
We need to check.
It should be six hundred minimum on the engine, should be.
With that requirement, is is there water laterals, I mean, a water mains and available, everything available for her to to use?
There's water availability directly in front of the property.
I have a question. Why does this applicant have to bear the burden? Will this fire hydrant only be used at her property? Or will it enable the fire department to use it if there was a fire at the county facility? Or across at the residential areas? Is it only exclusive for her, meaning that's her fire hydrant and you can't use it anywhere else?
No, it would be a public hydrant.
Then why is this applicant being asked to bear a hundred percent of that burden? If there's no other fire hydrants around? How how did the city handle fires before if it occurred in that area?
For the majority of hydrants, and I I'll let staff speak or others speak for this. Um same as any subdivision or any new development that comes in, they're responsible for adding the infrastructure um for the public safety side of items.
But the development has many structures on it, and it gets passed to the buyers. So here we're just, and they all benefit from it. While here, she's being asked to carry the load for all the neighbors. So I'm asking why, if she didn't come along, there'd be no fire hydrant.
That is correct.
Okay, so I think there, uh from my perspective, I think it's uh should be shared. Like figure out. That the other ones have to contribute, or that there's a discount for her. That's my position.
Also bringing an additional use to the location, and that's why that's.
Well, she's bringing in four trucks. She was building a five-story building or a huge industrial complex, I would say that. Putting in a hydrant would probably be justifiable. Putting in a few trucks for storage. Is not um. What I would consider to be the same level of fire load that a. Major infrastructure proj- or major construction project would put, and for what it's worth. These areas been zoned commercial for a hundred years. And there's probably been one or two water system upgrades since then. And at whatever time those were done, the city, for whatever reason, chose not to increase the infrastructure at the time those things were being done. Which would make the areas more attracted to, attractive to commercial use. So to suddenly say we should subject this person to put in not only a masonry wall, but pay for the. Uh installation of a hydrant. In an area that probably should have had one put in during the last upgrade. I think it's a bit much for some trucks. Now, like I said, if she was building a. Ten thousand square foot warehouse or a five-story building. That's a little different story. But for curiosity's sake. What does it cost to put in a hydrant?
Well, to fifteen thousand.
Big bucks.
How much does it cost to build a masonry wall?
Probably twenty thousand. Today's cost.
It is, it is, it is up there.
Let me ask you, how much does it cost to replace four trucks? Because one caught on fire. How much is it gonna cost you, can you recoup four trucks?
It depends on our insurance coverage.
But can you, can you, can you afford the downtime for the insurance to go through, you need those trucks to turn over every night, right? Uh I know, because I just came from the trucking industry. Okay, uh I'm I'm the one guy that knows. Okay, you can't afford to lose all four of those trucks. Every day that they're on there, they they're earning, any day they're not on the road, they're not earning.
It is a pretty big lot. And the trucks could be.
They're gonna stack them as close as possible.
Why?
That's the way it goes.
Are you gonna stack them side by side, park them side by side?
Spread them out a little bit.
Or spread them out, like for, I'm a farmer, we've got a hundred feet clearance between our stacks in order to have coverage. You probably have something, something in your insurance coverage, alright? Otherwise, they'd consider it all one stack or all one truck, okay? So you got lots of room there, just keep it separate. Okay, it's to your benefit.
May I ask what kind of building materials you're gonna be hauling in?
The trucks are on that site, are they loaded or are they empty?
Empty.
Well, the only fuel load is the trucks themselves.
Well, sometimes they are are um loaded, but most of the time are empty.
But stucco and sheet rock are not. Uh highly combustible materials um that I've learned. And. I'm gonna restrain myself on that one, I know too much about the business, so I'll stay out of that. But I do think it's an excessive uh request, considering the nature of the use of the property. And the fact that the city's had at least two opportunities in the last hundred years, I would say to upgrade the water system and put hydrants in. And I do believe there's a hydrant on the. End piece of that property? On the west side, right?
Which side?
West.
Of?
Of their property, so you've got on um on the street there, I believe I remember seeing one there.
Uh the only hydrant that I noted during um the site review and looking. On uh maps were on L Street, west of the property, and then down on uh East Fourth Street and K Street. Uh and to to add to it, um the fire code, um if if I may, I would like to read um from the fire code. Um fire hydrant systems, it's chapter uh five, section five oh seven point five, fire hydrant systems. Fire hydrant systems shall comply with section five oh seven point five point one through five oh seven. Point five point six, and appendix C of the uh by the approved method. Five oh seven point five point one, where required, where any portion of a facility or building here for constructed or moved into within a jurisdiction is more than four hundred feet. From the hydrant on a fire apparatus access road, as measured by approved route around the exterior of the facility or building. On-site fire hydrant domain shall be provided where required by the fire code official.
What year is that code?
What's that?
What year was that code?
This is two thousand nineteen California fire code.
And that probably same code goes back multiple.
Multiple years.
When was the last time the water system was upgraded in the uh industrial area? Cause I mean, they've got newer hydrants, the hide new, they've got all new hydrants, so I'm guessing those weren't put on old mains.
A location. Well, I have to ask Jackie for the historical record.
Basically, before any of yours time. Twenty years.
At least.
At least twenty, cause I know there was a large water system upgrade done twenty, twenty-five years ago. And I'm thinking the fire code probably said that twenty-five years ago.
City didn't bother do doing the fire code.
What's that?
The city didn't do it.
Where a portion of the building here for constructed or moved within. Um what we're looking at is a vacant lot at the moment, it's an open lot. And something is being constructed by means of moving in a whether a temporary office space, or whether the hazard is brought into the jurisdiction.
Wait, the build, are you building a building on the on the a vacant lot? So there's not a construction of a building gonna happen? And just because a truck's gonna be parked there. It's carrying fluid as far as diesel and oil. So it's a hazardous material, just like my car is, that's parked out on the street.
So during during the the site review, it was our understanding that there was gonna be a temporary office building?
A carport's not a bill. Carport's just a road. What's a carport for?
For the truck, well, just for one or two trucks.
How big is the carport going to be?
It's. I think it's fourteen. No, twenty by fourteen, I believe.
So you could potentially put two trucks together underneath it?
Not just one.
One?
Why do you wanna build a carport?
To cover the, from the sun, the trucks.
Gonna cover one truck?
Only one, yeah.
That's all you got the money for right now?
Yeah, I, yes, so right now.
Cover the uh the cars of your drivers while they're gone during the day?
Maybe they can park down there and then when come back, take the car out and then take the truck.
Can I ask what um staff, what triggered the requirement for an? A try, a noise study?
Um the noise, um in in other uses, past practices, um we had a um. Uh trucking company that was, uh that we would receive a lot of complaints because of the noise.
I don't you remember the one on P Street uh for Houston Felix. Uh so we wanna make sure that we have a technical study in hand to provide the the commissioners. Uh what the impacts and mitigation measures could be potentially be from this this business.
That's what I recalled, so that's why I'm. That's what kinda made I I went back and thought about when I just see these three signatures. On here, when it comes back to getting complaints and hearing back from potentially hearing, you know, back from. Neighbors um and we don't have anything besides. Um three signatures on something that doesn't. You know, not an official study, so but that's just my.
My question, the county?
About six hundred feet.
Does the city get complaints for the trucks going in and there?
I do not recall.
And has that county facility been there for a while? A long time, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and those people that live around there, they have to deal with it Monday through Friday. And you've got no complaints, now suddenly four trucks come in. And they come in, they probably leave in the morning and come in at night, okay? You think those four trucks are gonna break the camel's back? They leave before the people leave for work and they come in at night when people are ready to go to sleep. I don't think so.
Yes, sir.
Oprah, when you were. Fire code. Remember that I've heard several numbers tossed around three hundred feet. I see in the staff report that they say, I gather, as the crow flies, there's a fire hydrant within two hundred forty feet of the property. I heard you read four hundred feet and also make reference to onsite, is is that?
Yeah, it could be, it could be, it could be considered onsite private hydrant. Um if that's what the applicant chooses to do, um but they would still need to connect to a city main.
That's where the expen- bill expense. Uh I do believe will be more expensive because of the length of the piping. This this. As we have all over this side of town in particular, situations like this. Where you have industrial zones, you have an industrial zone. And then we're telling people that in order to park a truck in an industrial zone, it's not a permitted use. It's a conditional use and the conditional use is what really triggers all of this discussion. Uh uh and I and I think the discussion has pointed out some of the unfairness because under the law. Um you your can any condition you impose on a project. There's two basically two uh twofold requirement, one, there has to be a connection between the condition that you're imposing. And the need that's caused by the proposed project. Uh and secondly, there has to be some proportionality. So um I I I think on on both counts. Um there there there's there could be some debate about whether or not parking a couple of trucks on an industrial lot. Would trigger a need for a fire hydrant. Uh but I think more significant is whether or not parking a couple of trucks on an industrial lot. Triggering. Um what sounds to me like some considerable expense in between the sound attenuation wall and a fire hydrant. Whether there's really some proportionality there.
My thought is, uh we have houses right across the street, what fire hydrant serving those houses?
How many?
Yeah, the city hasn't done its job to protect its people.
All of a sudden now, we're gonna try and force onto a an applicant. That she has to go through this expense to install a fire hydrant to protect some trucks. But whoever built those houses or the city or whoever didn't provide him a fire hydrant for those houses right across the street.
Oh, there the hydrants in that area are pretty thin. Very thin. Correct?
That is correct.
And the fact that you're it is an industrial site, which kinda made me wonder why we're doing any of this to begin with, it's an industrial zone, why are we? Having a conditional use permit for an industrial zone that should allow this kind of activity in it in the first place. So your point is saying that maybe we need to reevaluate some of our zoning. I I think the problem that someone brought up with respect to P Street, for example, is that that's that was an I two zone. And the problem arose because that I two zone along P Street. Uh was there obviously like we see here, it's been there a long time. And and then the city annexes property right across the street and allow single-family dwellings. Not a hindsight being what it is, obviously, that's something. And you see a little bit of a buffer in terms of the what's between the east side of P Street. And the fence for those houses, but that certainly wasn't enough to to mitigate. At least in the view of those people that live there, the activity going on. Uh uh in an I two zone, which is the heaviest industrial zone this city has.
Probably the um the person that had the business or the company was there before the annexed property. So it's like I lived out in the country underneath right the Navy base, right next to the Navy base, grew up there. And could they would wave, they flew so low, the pilots, we could wave and we know their numbers. But my father told me and told all of us, we don't complain because they were here before us. And we knew they were there when we built the house.
I think a per prime example of what was happening is Mr. Marita was talking.
Yeah.
You have all these houses building being built right across the street from an airport. That airport and those helicopters and everything were there long before the houses. We can't change an airport because you chose to develop and the same here. We're putting, yes, I think it's wrong that we have an industrial zone right across the street from residential. But it was allowed to happen and it's just I feel that it's wrong to make her pay for a hydrant. Whenever we didn't even require it for the housing that went in across the street.
And when the city was laid out. A hundred years ago. How much of this was in such was zoned industrial, then over time wasn't getting used, so therefore somebody said, well, let's let them put houses there. I mean, that goes back farther than any of us were ever born. And uh like I said, there's been multiple upgrades just upgrades done and. You know, shame on the city for not. Putting more emphasis on fire protection in the industrial areas when they had the chance. Because it shouldn't be the property owner's responsibility, it's as the city or government. Past government, not this government. Uh should, when it has the opportunity to make improvements to infrastructure, to make the properties they have more attractive. To businesses to want to use them, so they don't have to pay that money, but when there's nothing there. That's, you know, it's like, whoa gee, you've had this a hundred years and you didn't do anything and now suddenly I gotta fit the bill for everything? Uh you know, maybe I'll look at the other industrial park where it's already done. Um so. I think this is a perfect use for this property, at least in the short term. Uh like I said, if she was building a warehouse or a giant building, then I'd say, you know, yeah, you need to put in a hydrant and some other stuff, but. We're talking about four four trucks. When you get a fleet of twenty, we might have to revisit the hydrant situation. But I think maybe at this point, it's it's um. I understand what the fire code says. And understand that. They would have to lay line north and then make a turn and go um east. For that, it's a little bit of inconvenience, no doubt about it. I fought a lot of fires in a lot of areas where there weren't hydrants were eight hundred feet away and we just made do. But this isn't her fault, this is the failure of previous city governments not doing their job.
If I can ask, the trucks that you're storing there, are they like double-trailored?
At that. Any others, anything else we need to?
I I'm just gonna ask for a mechanical thing here.
Sure.
Has this been in the hog for some time?
It's been sitting for a while, okay.
Asking a lot of back and forth.
Okay, 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 alright, just wanna make sure there was not a type. Thank you.
There's any other I questions for the applicant from the commission?
Yeah, I do, I haven't even started, um those trucks, they shut off after five minutes for the same reason, exhaust. Uh EPA, they will shut off whether I'm ready to to go or not. They will shut off completely after five minutes, so the noise and the and the uh the smog and all that. Whether the driver likes it, a lot of times it's inconvenience to us, we gotta get out, drop the trailer, whatever happens to be, it'll shut off. So we gotta reset it.
How how new the trucks are?
As for um well, California, if it doesn't do that, you can't drive it. Um you say that the flatbeds, dry vans and tank, I'm concerned about the tank, why tanks, what is in those tanks?
They're dry, they're dry powder tanks.
Where do you where are you picking all this stuff up from?
Um Esther City.
Where is it going?
Anana.
So your drivers pick up, say in the morning, empty, they take the product. Drop it off and they come back empty, okay, that makes a big difference, that that explains a lot. Uh why later on does it say um? Or is it materials, clothes, racks, retail, food goods?
And we use a drive-in, but right now we're using the the tanks.
Once you get into food goods, that changes a lot of things, health codes and whatnot. Um you can't be just leaving those trailers, there's much higher uh standards for that. Uh that's a dirt lot, right? Is it still dirt?
It is at the moment, yeah.
Uh you have any uh intention to expand?
Yes.
How long have you been in business?
Uh five years.
Five years, all out of Imperial?
Yes. El Centro.
Where's your office at?
Wilmington.
Wilmington.
I live in Wilmington.
Wilmington, like on the coast Wilmington?
I'm sorry?
Wilmington is.
No, Bloomington.
Bloomington.
By Fontana.
Okay, so.
Is that where your primary office is run out of?
Yes.
And then you're just opening up a second location here to just park your trucks?
You buy the property or leasing it? Yes. You bought it.
So you don't have a set route going in and out of this yard? You don't have a set route coming in and out of this yard? A set route, in other words, will you tell the driver, you know what, I'd rather you guys go down intra, this yard, down this street? And not down this street, uh because I see if you guys come west off of eighty-six, once that truck starts to slow down to make that right. Right in front of that auto zone, all those cars that are forty-five, fifty, fifty-five and that truck suddenly slows down. You're gonna get rear-ended. Or you can come or you can come from from uh Baroni. Baroni, I always kill that.
There is a turn lane at uh. Fourth Street off of eighty-six, it actually has a turn, it's not just. Little short ones, it actually has a. Hundred foot, hundred foot left-hand turn lane where the trucks actually get out of the highway and then. Like you know that, what am I telling you?
I just it it's sorry, it's it's just a suggestion. Uh I'm looking at all the poss- having been a driver, having been on both ends in the office and on the road, uh those things that you you need to pre-plan.
Coming in off of eighty-six and Baroni would be the safer.
Ag- again, it looks like we're we may go off the table with the with the fire, with the fire hydrant. Uh the only reason that I was kinda persisted on it, uh I look at it uh as a. Insurance policy for you in the event that those one you lose, one you just lose one, not all of them. Okay, but I know it's inexpensive. I know it's expensive, but I also know what it's like to lose all those trucks in one shot. Because they couldn't get those fires out fast enough, okay, uh I'm not I'm not making it difficult, trying to make it difficult for you. I still believe in what Mr. Peckel said, we don't wanna be the city that people just go through, people that go to, that's for. Uh to live in and to and run their business and uh start their businesses in, okay? Um I I think I know who your business is out of Wilmington, running that stucco and all of that, okay, alright.
Alright. Any other commissioners have any more comments or questions for the applicant? Staff, anybody? Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time, uh seven forty-one. So any further discussion between us before we uh. Make a motion or amend or amend a. Amend a CUP, which may possibly be the case. Well, I think the walls in the, well. Right now, the wall's in the CUP and the hydrant's in the CUP and if we wanna get rid of the wall or we wanna get rid of the hydrant, we have to amend the CUP. Cause right now it's in it.
Um have as far as barrier for noise.
I don't have that answer.
You haven't gone and visited that area?
I haven't. Oh, the, oh, I'm sorry, I.
Chain link?
I think it's yeah, it's chain.
Yeah, it's chain link, yeah, that is correct. Well, Imperial does not have the best dirt.
That's what I'm pointing out, okay, just give it, give it ten ten years and it'll fall over.
Done poorly, ten, if it's done good, it'll last thirty. Yeah, and I guess I'm assuming there'll have to probably be a gate in there to get through the. Get through the uh. Block wall, I'm assuming your trucks are gonna go in and out on fourth, right? Yeah. Yeah, so it won't even be a complete wall, it'll have to have a gate in it, yeah.
Have a chain link?
You talk to the um. You talk to the neighbors, residents, you tell them they're gonna put a wall in there, a brick wall? Re-block wall?
I think if we were asking her to do this just for aesthetics, I I would a hundred percent agree with you. But considering it's being included as a condition for the noise attenuation, I. I'm reluctant to remove to to vote on removing it. Because you do have those residences and in lieu of this noise study. This is what was decided on to keep to save her that ten to fifteen thousand dollars of doing a noise study, they're like, okay, let's do a masonry wall to just. Do the best at blocking the noise and I think there's some uh landscaping that's gonna go in to try and absorb the noise also.
Uh instead of paying an a professional to analyze and give you a twenty-page or a fifty-page.
That says you have to put up a block wall.
You're gonna spend the money there, okay, you're still spending the money.
But at the end, I think at the end of the day, a noise study would say you need to put up a block wall, so not in addition to paying for the noise study, you'd have to still do the block wall.
Probably, yeah.
The good thing is you own the property, so you're improving, so you get to pay more property taxes.
Or sell it to somebody else for more money because the improvements you've made.
Yeah.
Um I. I do know we have this this we're pushing uh plants and things to help. Uh I I'm questioning that right at the moment, one, it's the industrial area. Kinda hard to grow stuff in Imperial in the first place, um, the industrial area is probably worse. And with the probability that we may I see ourselves getting our water trimmed back. Even more in the next couple of years, depending on how things, yeah, right there. Um, I'm just wondering if, how wise it is for us to. Push plants in the industrial area when we may actually have to kill them?
I will say, uh, Chairman Hammer, that any landscaping that's done must be drought tolerant. So it in light of conservation efforts and that, and it needs to be native to the area, so um, we'll do our best with DG and.
Is drought tolerant really that well, that good at absorbing noise? Cause they're usually smaller plants and.
Older plant, they're not leafy. Yeah, I was kinda thought the planting was a little bit more est- aesthetics than noise, um.
I don't know that it's aesthetics when we're asking them to be built on the inside of the wall, it's not like the public's gonna see them anyway.
Is it on the inside or is it on the outside?
The wall is on the property line and the landscaping truly is a part of the right away.
I thought it said in the, I don't have my staff report with me, my computer died, I thought it said on the inside.
On a page eleven, uh, eight G.
No, I was just with the whole fact that the alkali flats is kinda not the best place to grow plants and with the. Uh, potential water issues we may have, even with drought resistant stuff, if we have to cut back a lot. Those would be areas that we'd be like, hey, it's industrial, you know what, just. Worry about it in a few years.
Under the community, I'm sorry, under the community development condition G, it does say fifteen gallon trees. Twenty feet on center and shrubbery shall be installed and maintained along the inside of the wall. In a five-foot wide raised landscape planter.
Okay, that doesn't.
I'm in agreement with Chairman Chairman Hammer and uh Commissioner Mendoza. You know, with respect to the shrubbery and the plants, we're in an industrial area, we don't, it's not gonna make any difference. Where you're gonna have some cactus sticking out like this, right, maybe some little. Muppets, you know, down there that look, that need a haircut, it's not gonna do anything.
I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, trying to make it look a little bit better, but I do think in the, considering the current situation with the water and everything else. We might need to be a little bit more flexible and those areas, at least for a couple of years, I I just. Saying we can put it out there, but if they don't get put in and we get our water cut, it's gonna be like, hey, you know what, industrial folks like, shh, you know. See what things are like in a couple more years, but.
And also going off of that, they're requiring it to be planted in a raised planter, that's more construction expense to build a raised planter.
Yep.
Well, it'll all die if it's planted in the ground.
Yeah.
But I think we're getting, really going down a rabbit hole here. Um, we need to kinda, I think. She wants to get out of here and and about ten more minutes, I might have to go to the bathroom again, so. Um, we need to iron out our amendments on the CUP if we wanna amend anything or not, um. I'm all for uh. I know the fire department, I'm not gonna be very popular with the fire department, I think the hydrant's a. Excessive expense considering that use the property's gonna have, at least for the moment. She builds her fleet up to fifteen or twenty trucks, and I think we might have to revisit that and say, you know what, it's time to spend the money and put in a hydrant. The wall, that's a noise thing, um, the plants. That's uh, could be an issue, I think water-wise, I mean, like I said, if we put them in and then we say, hey, you gotta cut your water back and then they all die. That's kind of a waste of money, um, at least under the current conditions, so.
I'm mistaken in the drought restrictions, trees, you can still, you can still water trees, you can't water grass or shrubbery, but you can still water trees.
The last time Imperial cut back the water, they didn't make anything specific to trees, El Centro did, El Centro was. Don't water the lawn, but water the trees.
And now we have a bunch of dead trees.
Imperial was just uh more about, yeah, you can only water your lawn so much, didn't really, they didn't really say, keep the trees alive, but kill the grass. So Imperial was a little less clear on that, um. Anyway, how do we wanna uh, how do we wanna proceed with the CUP, as far as um, any amendments, changes, anybody have any? Thoughts on how we wanna do this?
I'm willing to make a motion, but I just wanted to find out from the rest of the commission how they feel about the landscaping, I'm, I, my intent is to make a motion. To approve with the removal of the condition of the fire hydrant, I just wanna know what the will of the commission is about the landscaping and I'll include it in my motion.
And for dropping the the trees.
Yeah, I think, I think under the current.
Then if it is okay with you, Mr. Chairperson, I'm ready to make a motion. Without, or with the wall, that it's a condition, I'm not gonna ask that that be removed, the only thing we're gonna ask to be removed is the landscaping and the fire hydrant. That's okay with you?
Yeah, I just wanna think about that, so the. How we can exempt her from the hydrant in this time, but not. Uh, make it so that it's potential that it may have to come back to be revisited.
Well, I think that the the CUP talks about the the level of service at that lot of what she can have in there. And if she starts increasing the capacity or the increasing the amount of trucks that she's doing there, she's gonna have to come back for an amended amendment to her CUP anyway. And we can impose it at that.
Right, because she does specify, I think, four trucks, okay, yeah, that I think, I think that covers our basis, okay, go proceed.
Um, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number PC twenty twenty-two dash twelve. A resolution of the planning commission approving CUP twenty-two dash zero two for Denise Chavez located at four twenty-six East Fourth Street. Um, for the uh conditional use permit to allow a trucking storage facility at that location. And with, as part of this approval, the conditional use, we'd like to remove the conditions of the installation of the fire hydrant and the landscaping.
And if I may, Commissioner, um, we wanna add that this project description on the CUP, which includes a two to four trucks. Cause it's only stated on the staff report, but not the actual.
Okay, then we would like to add that statement that it is uh to allow two to four trucks up to, let's say. Up to four trucks at which time if the capacity increases, they have to come back for an amended CUP.
Thank you.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second end, call for the vote.
Motion passes four zero.
Who, who didn't uh?
Uh, Chairman Hammer, your, your vote was not recorded.
Let me uh.
What?
Let me fix this real quick.
I pushed on it, I saw the number change.
It didn't change on our system, I apologize, we're gonna have to recast that vote.
Okay.
One more time.
I'm gonna wait till last.
Alright, motion passes five zero.
We're in business, good luck.
Please tell your truckers to be careful crossing that.
Will we move on? Oh, motion passes, sorry. Um, so we'll get into um commissioners' reports. Let's start on this end, Commissioner Body, have anything to report or talk about or bring up? Well, you know, that's what we're here for.
So, I see that uh there's already asphalt poured on the blue tree, I looked over there as I drove.
Um, it's expected on the twenty-third, um, I'll get. I'll get confirmation tomorrow, I'll pass it on to management and then they will provide an update. But, yeah, we we thought so too, but we're pushing.
It's gonna happen, it's gonna happen, second, have, have, have we got any plants?
Have we got any plants for the uh rest of Aiden Roof?
Yes, that should be starting in January.
Okay, great, yeah, cause uh, I've, I've heard from people who live here in this town. That they like seeing the greenery that that survived the summer heat, that planted less earlier this year. Thank you, that's it.
Laundry, I had a laundry list of um things last. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, I'll uh.
Well, you could pick one, no, okay, uh, Commissioner Mendoza?
Um, yes, as you all know, tonight will be my last planning commission meeting with the rest of you, I thank you very much. And I, I, I extend my thanks to each of you for, for your welcomeness for me on this board. I've, it's been a great learning experience, I think I've learned something from every single one of you, um. And I'm looking forward to it, I'm, I'm ready to get to work for the city and 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 move on to. Uh, bigger projects and and I know that I'll be receiving stuff that this commission comes through this commission and goes up to council and. And again, I, I just thank each and every one of you, um, as far as this month, I, we had a wonderful parade of lights. And Christmas in a small town, thank you to the the city staff, that was, they, they were both awesome events as usual. Um, I did express a little bit of concern to Alexis about the location of our stage, um, it's a little kinda far out there and. Kinda separated from, and we don't really get the crowd out there, so I talked to Alexis about that, um, just as a suggestion. And um, I in, make sure, wanna make sure that each of you realize that on, I believe it's January seventh at Sunset Park. We're gonna have a tree planting event, um, this kind of is near and dear to my heart, I actually am the project manager for that grant that's providing those trees. So I'm working directly with the city staff on that project and um, they're gonna be planting several trees there. And West Coast Arborists will be on site and giving a workshop, teaching people how to properly plant, care for and en- ensure the the survivability. Of the trees, and so I encourage all of you to go there, um, they're, they're generally fun events and the city does great in putting them on, so. January seventh, I believe it's start, they're starting at what, Alexis, nine thirty in the morning?
Nine AM.
Nine, nine AM, and that's the part for the workshop, and I believe then the rest of it starts about a half an hour later.
Is that a Saturday or weekend?
It's a Saturday.
Sunset Park.
So they're, I think they're planting, I'm gonna draw a blank on how many numerous trees. Um, so we, I, I hopefully will see you all out there, and again, thank you to all of you and um, I've, I've, I've truly enjoyed being on this commission and. I'm looking forward to my new appointment coming up next week, and if any of you are available next Wednesday, I'd be great, be great to see you there. Um, for the swearing in of all the the new elect council elects and our city clerk.
Please, Chair Hart.
I just wanna echo that, that um, congratulations Stacy on your um, election to city council. Um, I think that's two commissioners that have gone to city council since I've started on commission, so. I'm excited to see what you'll bring to the table and um, and I'll be following your journey, so congratulations.
Um, I'm gonna get into one item before I get to the mushy stuff, so, um. So I actually have one thing I would like to bring this city's attention, it's been a problem for a while, is the intersection at uh Rodeo and Fifteenth. Have a huge problem with standing water there every day, and it stinks, I mean, it's stagnant, and more water gets added to it constantly. And it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't drain, and I was always kinda like, gee, where's the water coming from? Well, finally, my daughter made me get out at like five in the morning and go with her exercising, which I'm still aching from. But, come to find out, it's the veterinarian's office watering the grass. And they watered for a very long time, and it's running down the sidewalk, and it's running into the gutter, and it's pooling there, and it, they water almost every day. And it, it's, that's where the water's coming from, oh, occasionally there's, you see water that maybe comes farther up the street, but. That's where it's coming from, so I don't know whether we need to have our code enforcement guy, you know, stay away from the. Areas with cars and this, over the sidewalks and maybe go look for, for that, but I think. I mean, I'm not opposed to anybody watering their grass, having ice grass, I have an ice grass, and some of the water gets on the sidewalk, sometimes the lava gets in the gutter. It happens, but I, he's got a slope and I think he's just putting too much water. And that's why it's just running constantly down and it's tearing up the street, I mean, the street's deteriorating, now the concrete's sinking. It's smells terrible, uh, and it'd be nice if, I, and I've mentioned actually other city people saying, hey, you know. We had a problem here and this is where it's coming from and nothing's happened, so now I'm, you know, taking it to the next level. Seeing if maybe we can, uh, you know, do something about that or at least try to help. Him or the owner of the property, the vet, maybe assist him in how he can take care of his. Grass without maybe putting so much of it into the street. Well, when if it's in the street, it's not helping the grass grow, and it's tearing up the street, and which I probably to fix that intersection right now would probably be. Ten thousand bucks, just knowing how expensive asphalt and concrete is. Uh, so there's my one uh, uh, commissioner item I wanted to bring up. Uh, now after that, I will uh, finish up with my congratulations to Commissioner Mendoza. Um, it's been an honor uh, serving with you, looking forward to uh. Seeing you on the city council, and I will encourage all planning commissioners, if they are available next Wednesday. To make it to the council chambers to uh. See our latest member, get uh, move up to the next level of uh, city life and uh, show her our support. And with that, I will uh, go to the city, let's just go around the room, start over there, have anything to report. Anything to add? Uh, Chairman Hammer and commissioners, just wanna echo, we look forward to working with Commissioner Mendoza on the council. Uh, and hope, indeed hope that you can uh, make it next Wednesday for the uh reorganization of the council. And St- and Stacy's joining of the council, and beyond that, happy holidays.
So if I may, Chairman Hammer, this actually the, the issue that you bring up between on Rodeo and Fifteenth, uh, that was actually uh relayed. To the city um, by another resident complaint uh, this past week, and so Public Services is working with our community development department on that. Um, as far as educating the property owners, so, um, just say that meaning it is on our radar and.
That's funny, it just took, it wasn't just till last week it got on the radar, cause it's been a problem for like two years. You know, better late than never.
So, um, otherwise, uh, same sentiments as expressed, so excited for next week and excited for. Um, the next phase of what I would say is the city's growth and looking forward to those that are gonna get to set that vision, so.
And in our uh, uh, next meeting, we can maybe figure out where we're at as far as the commissioners are concerned as far as. Our life expectancy here and uh, uh, who's on the chopping block and who isn't, so.
You're solid till June and, but yes, we can absolutely outline how that will, how that will work, once Commissioner Mendoza assumes her um, seat. Um, that immediately vacates her current seat, in which we will notice um, a um. Publication to accept uh, uh nominations for that, um, and that appointment will fall to um, Ida. Ida Obeso Martinez, that will be her appointment.
I watched mine give his final speech, so I know I'm in this soup, cause I watched him, Mr. Dale, so I'm like, oh, okay. Stacy and um, Obeso are the two new ones.
Yes, um.
So.
Mendoza will actually take over Mayor Dale's appointments.
Okay. Okay. And then Mr. Tucker's, I'm assuming, cause he's being.
Re-elected.
So, so, so those three will all have.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Inspector Loper, since you're here, do you have anything you'd like to report other than your complete disdain for us on the hydrant situation? With, you know.
Um, first off, congratulations, um, great to have, um, you know, moving in with the city and moving on. Um, thank you guys for listening to, um, you know, ICFT today and we represent, you know, both the county and the city of Imperial and keep going from here on out, so. Um, thank you for listening and, and taking into our consideration on the items and, and moving here on out with other, other stuff, so, thank you. Have a good uh, holidays.
Thank you, you too. Stay safe out there. Uh, if there is nothing else, then I will call this meeting uh, adjourned at eight, zero, eight, eight, eight zero six, eight oh six. Eight zero six is morning.